Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for invocation of pledge. Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Grant that we may not so much to seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive and it is in pardoning that we are pardoned. It is in dying that we are born to return alive. Amen.
Join me, pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without any doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just break the rules, please.
Kerry Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jason Steph, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Catherine Renn, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. Julia, first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from December 17th. Happy New Year to everybody, by the way. And you've had an opportunity to look over those council meeting minutes, and now would be the opportunity to make any edits to those, or if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Any two approves?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We have a series of second readings this evening, and Mr. Manino, you have got the show for the next bit here. Start us off with T-20-03, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The next three cases are all related. The first one is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. It would allow indoor sports and athletic training facilities within the heavy industrial zoning district with a special use permit. With that said, Planning Commission did recommend approval, and there have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for T-20-03, asking anybody wishing to speak either for or against a step forward at this time. And if you would, please, your name and your address for our clerk.
Name is Scott Arnold. I live at 310 Clubhouse Court in Kennesaw. I appreciate y'all hearing this, Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
As opposed to the text amendment, we've here, I represent the pole vault club there, the Flicky Stick Pole Vault. We've been, actually been in that facility a few years now. We just realized what we needed to go through the zoning to get it, you know, I guess, per code. And we just think that the adaptive, that the text amendment to allow the, I'm going to blank here, but that the athletic facilities in the heavy industrial, you know, with the special use permit, is just the perfect use for, I speak for this building itself, because as y'all know, that building's probably been sitting there abandoned since 2003. And this is just a kind of a win-win for the owner and for small groups like us that really need to find a place that, you know, has that adapted to use to be able to do this. And like I said, small clubs like ourselves, we're just, you know, we're a small nonprofit there that's trying to help the community. And it really helps us to, and helps the owner to be able to, he can get a little bit of rent out of it, and we can pay a little bit of rent. You know, we don't, we can't afford brand-new facilities and, you know, places that are, you know, brand-new facilities. But anyway, I just appreciate y'all's, appreciate y'all's consideration and approval of this. And like I said, it really does help small clubs out like us to, you know, just to kind of, you know, help out the community in the way we can. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to step forward, may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T-20-03 and turn it over to council for consideration.
Much to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Randy.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This item is directly related to the text amendment as a special use application to allow Flicky Stick or Georgia Pole Vault to locate at 55 Xena Drive. As the applicant had mentioned, they are already there. They are trying to straighten out the zoning. In this process, getting the text amendment was the first step. The special use permit is the second step. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application, and there have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Manino at this point on this item? Thank you. Open up a public hearing for SU-20-03, and again, anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time.
Good evening. Steve Rowe, 1592 Sandpoint Drive, Roswell. I just wanted to let you know that this, this club is a really asset, a really good asset to the community. It allowed my son to be able to train and to bring his skills up to a level where he could jump in college. And he really has, has blossomed as an individual, both from his coaching and the encouragement that the club gave him going through the process. So thank you very much for consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing for SU-20-03 and turn it over to council for consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. S-20-04, Randy, please.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is an application at the same property, 55 Xena Drive, in a different tenant space for indoor sports, baseball training facility. And with that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Manino at this point in time? Thank you. Public hearing for SU-20-04. Again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU-20-04. Turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The Randy Manino Show continues. More second readings of ordinances.
I think these are Keith's. With that, there are four proposed text amendments to the alcohol ordinance. With that, the first one, 4-1, under the definition section, there's an addition of the downtown entertainment zone. It will also include the map. Since the first reading, the map has been modified. We did eliminate a portion that went up, I believe Gilmer, to its intersection with Church Street. That modification was pointed out, I believe, by Mr. Fox at the last meeting. That map has been changed per those instructions. And with that, the Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval of this particular change.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Manino on the map? Is there any discussion on the map and its boundaries? If there is no discussion to be had, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
No.
Motion carries.
Mayor, I'll talk about the next item and let Randy talk about 7 and 8.
Okay.
Basically, it's amending Section 4-105 and 106 to allow for the entertainment zone. We have incorporated all of the changes that y'all discussed during the last meeting have been made to this. In addition, during work session, it was recommended that we do away with the administrative fee that was going to be charged on the cups and add language to the ordinance in that section in 106-F3, which says, "Or buy an approved vendor by the Cartersville Downtown Development Authority as an alternative individual to sell those cups to the license holder." In addition, paragraph 3 of the ordinance is to be renumbered to paragraph 4, and paragraph, and the new paragraph 3 shall read, "This ordinance shall become effective on February 11, 2021." I believe it is recommended by staff that y'all approve this ordinance as amended, as I have just discussed.
Okay. Thank you for that and those amendments. So since you've read those, with those proposed changes, any motion that might be forthcoming does not need to highlight those amendments?
Does not. Just, you just need to say you're approving the ordinance as amended.
Okay. Thank you. Opportunity for discussion on Section 4-105 and 4-106. Item 6 on the agenda.
I'll just, I mean, I've made my case before, but I just would stand that I don't think this adds a great deal to our downtown community. And I understand that, you know, I spoke to another council member this afternoon, and he brought up some good points, but I would still, I would stand with several in our community that are not opposed to this ordinance of open container in our downtown districts.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If there is none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve the rules and regulations for downtown entertainment zone as amended per city attorney.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Manino, you have item number 7, package hours.
Yes, this is Section 4-121 of alcohol ordinance. What this deals with is the package hours that they could sell. It just basically matches the consumption hours for selling within our ordinance. Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. I need just questions for Randy on this item. If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the next one for you, please, Randy.
Yeah, the last one is Section 4-414, and it's dealing with home delivery of alcohol. This is per the state guidelines, and the Alcohol Control Board, Control Board did recommend approval of this ordinance, and there have been no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Manino on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we move on, I want to thank the members of the public for their input on these above items. Also, the Alcohol Control Board and staff and council for the time and diligence into this. No one person makes rules. We all work together. And the time and effort and passion on this topic, I look forward to having that same level on other topics that involve the city. Mr. Manino, your show continues. Last one for you this evening, I think.
Yes, this is an annual update and adoption of the capital improvements element and the Community Work Program. Because the city has impact fees, we have to do these annual updates. Otherwise, it would just be every five years. With that, we held a public hearing back in November where we presented the document and updated the document for you. It has since been sent to the Department of Community Affairs and the Regional Commission for their review. They're fine with it. And the next step of that would be to approve resolution transmit and approve the final document.
I apologize for not thinking of this before asking this in work session, but, you know, the fact that they're set at zero creates an awful lot of work every year for you.
It does.
Obviously, we keep them in place because if we did away with them and ever chose to re-implement them, the work to do that is challenging.
That is correct, because we currently have the ordinance in place. If we ever choose to re-implement impact fees, it'll be a lot easier because the ordinance has already...
My question to you is this. If we set an impact fee of $5, $10, $20, does that mean that your work goes away for the five years instead of having to do this every year?
No, because we have an impact fee.
Oh, because we have the ordinance in place.
Yes. If you eliminate the ordinance altogether, yes, that would eliminate...
The work. I got you. I was thinking it was because it was at zero specifically. So I apologize for that. I've been doing this long enough, but I probably should have understood that better.
But that's right. How popular, how many other cities did impact fees?
Well, during the recession, several did what we did. They reevaluated the fee structure. Some eliminated, some did away with impact fees altogether. But I don't have that actual number. But several jurisdictions still utilize impact fees as a financing tool for infrastructure.
I can say, since the recession ended, I am not aware of any new jurisdictions adopting impact fees, except for some of the new cities that were created who basically carried over the impact fees that were being assessed by the counties that they were located in. So the counties would not be losing those revenues as part of those sharing arrangements.
In the vicinity around us, I believe Cherokee and Canton are probably two of the closest two that actually still do impact fees and have an impact fee ordinance. I don't believe Cobb has impact fees. Paulding does not have impact fees. I don't know about Rome and Floyd County, but I don't think they, they have an impact fee ordinance either.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Randy? Thank you. Chair, want to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Wilson, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This, George Department of Transportation has recently made a few comments on our Duffett Ferry Road project that will require some additional traffic forecasting as well as additional engineering to analyze an intersection of Burt Hippie Road and Mission Road. And the projected fees for this, it's a recommended change order actually from Southland Engineering for $64,250. $33,750 of those dollars would be for the engineering study at the intersection, which there is a possibility based on federal highway comments that it may not have to be done. So if that's, if it's not required, then we would not proceed forward with that, the engineering study. So we were requesting in order to move this project forward to approve the change order of $64,250.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Wade on this item? Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Wade. Mr. Hampton, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight kind of with a two-part agenda item. One is for the approval of the amount for our tree trimming budget, and the other is for the contractor to do the work for the tree trimming budget. We've been using Trees Unlimited for a long time over in Cave Springs, and they are one of the top two bidders that came up on the ECG bidding process. You know, the ECG business out for all the cities in Georgia that are a member of ECG, Electric Cities of Georgia. And they do all the legwork for us. And I put in your package, you see, it's a whole bunch of paper and stuff in there that they have to fill out. But anyway, even though Trees Unlimited was a little bit higher, they did negotiate down the amount so that they could fit within our budget for this year. We had a budgeted amount for $100,000, so I'm requesting an amount not to exceed of $100,000 for tree trimming, which would take us into the end of this budget year. And then as far as going after that, it would be on next year's budget. And to approve the contract to be signed with Trees Unlimited to perform that service for us.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Derek on this item?
I don't know. Keith did review the contract. I forgot to mention that earlier.
I did. Yeah, I still remember. Did he get paid for it?
Uh, I don't know. I got a...
Not yet.
I had a bill show up on my desk this morning.
It's in the checkbook. Check's in the mail.
There's no questions. Motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porta?
Yes, Mayor. This item's a monetary school lease agreement that expired at the end of December. I'm asking council to continue on under paragraph 19, which allows us to go month-to-month through the end of May when the school year ends for that school. And now that'll allow us to redo the lease if we're interested in moving forward that lease agreement or a future lease agreement at that time. Just allow them to continue on at $750 a month.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. While Ms. Penny makes her way up here for her city council debut. We do have one item to add to the agenda, and I'd like to ask council to add that now.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item is added. Ms. Annalee Penny, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is for a complete website rebuild for the city. What we have right now is not very conducive to what we need, let alone our citizens. So if we move over to MuniCode, this is a group we already work with when it comes to our meeting and agendas on the website, but they also do website rebuild and self-publishing software, which would allow me or any of the department heads or anybody they would like to delegate, if we had to post something on there, easy breezy. What we use right now, I just want to give a little bit of a comparison, Civic Plus, over four years, if we continue to use them, that would total $43,877. If we shift over to MuniCode, which the very first year would be contracted, the following three years would be auto renewal, total would be $29,300. That is a savings over four years of $14,577. If I can have Randy perfect click over to this prime example that I think is something that would speak to what Cartersville needs. Kenai is a city in Alaska with about, they have 7,700 residents. They have a website that is just boom in your face. I think Cartersville deserves something that looks just like this. It's simple. There's no scrolling down. Everything you need is right there. One page, you can hover over, find the departments very easily. And it's also responsive, which means when it comes to mobile, it is going to look just as good. There's not a lot of scrolling, just easy to find, easy for me to use, easy for me to post, easy for everybody at home to access as well. There's, it's almost one of those things that's foolproof. It looks great, easy to use, easy to build.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Penny on this? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And Annalee, we're going to have you do the other item that we just added to the agenda. If you would like to present that to us.
The one thing that I've been getting a lot of questions on is the city calendar. It is, it's gone out. It is now in the post office and should be in mailboxes tomorrow for anybody who is wanting to know. This is a great, as you can see right there, took a different route this time. We decided, let's kind of throw back, let's do vintage photos. It's all black and white. It's, it'll give you a reason to want to love your city even more because you get to learn a lot about history. So it's from the 1800s all the way, I think the most recent picture is maybe 1960. So it's phenomenally done. We worked along with New Dimensions and Bartow History Museum and Rose Lawn Museum to make this happen. The total for this year, including in postage and the cost of the calendars themselves, $11,386.22, and I'm asking for approval on the final total.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Annalee on this? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Mr. Porta, back to you.
Yes, Mayor. I guess one other I just want to point out, I appreciate Connie Salter, who also started before Annalee got hired on the counter process. So she did a lot of work doing her regular job plus on the counter. So I want to thank her for that work, and then Annalee took it on when she started. The item on the agenda is the Chubb Cancer Insurance Policy for our firefighters, annual renewal of $13,320, and recommend that you approve.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions? Much to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Dan.
Yes, Mayor. This is an item for purchase of two vehicles from Prater Ford, who was the lowest and best bid. These are two vehicles for the administration department. Once the assistant city manager position is filled, they'll need a vehicle. And then I'm looking for a second vehicle for our new public relations communications manager, as well as other administration department staff to use. Total of these two vehicles is $48,823.60.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
Just a quick question. I apologize for not asking during the work session, but so on these, obviously, we put them out. It's not our job to make sure that local people bid on them, but is that, is it common that we wouldn't get anybody locally to bid on them?
We try. We reach out. We put it on the city webpage. They get, so they get notified when they get, that bid goes out there. What you see a lot of times is they'll, it's an individual working at the dealership. If they're interested in it, it's not every dealer has somebody that does these because they, it's really, they have to do a high volume. They don't make maybe $1,000 on sale of vehicle, or maybe less than that. It's these volume dealers that really make more money because they sell in volume, they sell a lot more vehicles. But we do put it out locally. We sometimes give them a call.
Might stay there for a little while. We did a lot with Pugmire and Robert Hall, but I haven't seen lately, and not just to say those two, obviously, it depends on the vehicle that we're bidding, but I just haven't seen anybody locally doing it. So again, we're saying here at council meeting, so if they're listening, if they care, but...
Right. I mean, we try. Again, again, we let them know and put it on city webpage and also in the state webpage, and that's how these other places pick it up.
Okay. I'm ready. If you're ready, I'll, I'll make a motion. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come forward, council this evening? I will make a couple of brief comments. I spared Chris Mosley with Cartersville Medical Center from coming here tonight. I was, I did originally ask him earlier this week, and he was willing to do so. The numbers here locally are quite frightening, quite honestly. And we are, the hospital is at capacity. A couple days ago, I believe there were upwards of, close to 80 people that were in their 119-bed facility. I believe that's gone down a little bit, and that's good. I was on a statewide call with Georgia Municipal Association folks, and while much of that was off the record, I'll tell you that statewide, there are a lot of places that are in the same situation as Cartersville. I will tell you that it's just another opportunity to encourage people, not a political statement at all, just to try to do your part. You know, I don't, I don't think anybody wants to get to a situation where we're overtaxing our healthcare system, or that we get into a situation where there are families and friends and loved ones who might need medical attention, be it related to COVID or to anything else, and for our hospital to not have the capacity to be able to handle that. You also have to keep in mind, they're getting as much help as they can. It's a human resource. Now, we've got a healthcare workers that have been working around the clock on this for several months, and the resources of human beings is, is really taxing. So I'll just ask people again to do your part. There are statewide mandates that have been in place, and they've been in place for a while. And I think, quite honestly, you don't have to look too hard to know that a lot of places that should be following mandates that are in place are not following them. And I'll just ask them to please revisit that and to, again, do your part so that we can all stay open and that we can all continue to try to provide for ourselves and bring the dignity of self-supporting to keep that part in our lives. And so I'll get off my soapbox on that. The only other thing that I'll mention is my mantra is, and will continue to be, that this city will continue to work to be the example for the rest of the world to follow. And that doesn't change. And just like for everybody to keep continuing to carry that forward in what they say and what they do and how we treat people. So, being said, anybody else?
Well, man, I'll go ahead and let you know, I'm a very social person, and, you know, I probably struggle a little bit when it comes to the masking and trying to be socially aware, but, and I'm pretty quiet when it comes to my own personal illnesses, but on the 19th, I became very ill. On the 20th or 21st, I tested positive, and I was in quarantine in the sunroom just for myself. Ended up being a full 11 days before my fever subdued. And it's one of those things where when you're passionate, people ask me about employee benefits, and please don't, because I'll talk to you to find out. If you ask me about my family, I'm the same way. And now, I called Gary just for a second on the call before I got here. I mean, I felt like I could travel the world and talk about how serious the virus is. And so I echo your sentiments and, you know, praise the Lord.
and, you know, far as the word, I'm, I'm healthy and fine. But I promise you, in day like seven or eight, and I thought, why is this continuing? How many more days is it going to go? Am I, you know, subject to ending up in the hospital, things of that sort? So, you know, not that I'm on my, you know, you gave me the platform, you meant you brought it up, but, you know, it is very serious. It always has been. And I think a lot of people, you know, that have had it affect them, all had a different perspective. So, it is dangerous. I think our community is doing the right things, and hopefully people will continue.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to mention the football team and just congratulate them on a job well done this past season. I'm not sure that's your realm, not really my realm, but I think they did a great job, and I think we're seeing some fruits of that from Trevor. And I just want to congratulate him on his accomplishments too from the city.
Very well said. Anyone else going around here? I will finish. I'll have the final word. I want to thank Barbara Hoffman for being here and for Recovery Bartow and for the efforts that they're bringing to this community for those that are battling addiction. I appreciate your leadership and for taking hold of tackling a very difficult topic. And we look forward to standing with you and helping in any way we can. Thank you. Chair want to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
They go.